It's kind of part of this, do you have an update on on the liner that's failed?
So, the gentleman from the company came out today to look at it. It, I don't have all the pictures, but the, for those of you who haven't been advised of it, the liner has essentially thirty holes in it that we found. And we're cleaning the rest of the liner off to see if there's any more small holes or punctures that we can find. But basically, at this point, we have thirty that we know about, it could be more. The estimate to fix that is eighty seven, or eighty-five hundred dollars, sorry.
Patching?
If you look at your computer in the working agenda, you could find all the photos Kelly's loaded them in there for this meeting.
So.
Okay.
So yeah, so basically, all those holes are in this one corner, you know, along the face right here. There is one large hole in the center that looks like just a failure of a turtle.
And the the life expectancy of the repaired?
So the life expectancy of the liner in the first place, from what the contractors indicating is that it's well in excess of forty, forty, fifty years, maybe longer. Any patches would have the same life expectancy, so forty or fifty years from when it was put in. We walked the whole, the whole liner, he pointed out some areas that need to be fixed just because of how it was installed. It's not installed the way that they would install it today because of what they know now about how how liners are folded and how liners are, you know, creases end up being cracks and things like that.
And we have twenty years on that liner now, right?
So there's twenty years on it now, from what he said, or from what he saw today, he didn't see any reason to replace the liner. He said that fixing the liner would be the prudent way to go, that there isn't, he didn't see any, you know, telltale signs of an imminent failure of the rest of the liner.
Did we get any results back from the testing of the of the?
So the, so Regional Water Quality Control wanted us to compare groundwater results from before we suspected they had, that the damage occurred and from today, or not today, but recent. And there was no appreciable difference. So they're satisfied on their side that there is no groundwater contamination. So they're not requiring anything other than replace, or to repair the liner. One thing with the repurposing of this this pond right here, since we're talking about it, is there will have to be changes to the inlets and outlets. So that's one option that we can look at right, well, not today, but we can look at before fixing the liner, is doing those changes so that when the liner company comes out and fixes it, they're fixing it all at once and it's all done and we put it back in service once. If we fix it now, put it back in service, then we have to go through this whole exercise again and draining it out, cleaning all the sledge out, cleaning the liner off, and then doing the work to put in the new lines.
Once the plant starts getting built, is this liner garbage, or can it?
So this this pond will stay there, this liner is gonna stay there for only two years, fifty years.
Okay, that's not the one that gets filled in, okay, what about?
So the liner that's gonna get torn out is this one where the building is.
And that's that's trash anyways because it's not like they're the exact same volume, so it wouldn't be like usable anywhere else really.
Well, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't pull the liner out and reuse it anymore.
Right.
Because the top, the top fifth of it, I guess, has been sunbedded for the last twenty years. And there's not really any value to saving the bottom. Since we're talking about liners, these other two ponds right here, once, once this one's back in service, we'll go through the process of cleaning these down to a point where we're satisfied that there's no damage to those. Just out of, out of abundance of caution, make sure that we're not leaking some more. But that is, that, the liner is an item on the agenda for the twenty-first to talk about. The cost to repair it versus the cost to just do the changes now and what that would mean.
What's the cost of replacing that?
The gentleman said today that if we were to go and replace the entire liner, that just the liner installation, from his perspective, would be sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars. That would include?
Labor.
That's, that's him coming and putting the liner. But doesn't, that's not paying for somebody to come take out sections of the old liner where you would have to go around pipes that are coming in or digging out the entire perimeter and exposing the, basically, the footing of the liner where it comes in, goes down, goes over, and comes back up. So somebody would have to come do that before, so you're probably looking at four or five thousand for that, just to dig it out. They'd come put the liner in for sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars and then we'd be right back to where we are today.
Got it.
Plus the cost of the new liner. No, that would be the cost of the new liner.
So eighty thousand.
So a pageant, you know, a pageant for eighty-five hundred, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Ten percent.
And the contractor is saying that there's no relief to change, or to replace the liner at this point. He didn't see anything that would.
There's no undermining that everything underneath is sound?
How did it happen? Now, how did it get damaged in the first place?
I'm not completely certain how it got damaged in the first place. The only thing I can speculate is that in two thousand eight, when we had a contractor come and drain it and pump the sledge out, that some of their equipment was used and damaged it in that corner when they did that labor, or did that work. At that time, there wasn't a lot of oversight in what was going on, so it's entirely possible that happened. And the supervisor at the time saw it and didn't care or didn't see it's on. There's a lot more supervision of our contractors now, so this type of thing should never happen again. Most of the holes are attributable attributable to basically the same timeframe, the same type of action because they're all similar in the same area. The hole in the center that I described, really does look like it was just a failure of a weld in the, in the material. And most likely what happened is the aerator was pulling up on it and just tore it to a point where it pulled out a section.
Can I take questions from here?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions so far?
I have a question about just the, the idea of having a community service district offices building in a dead-end street of a housing area, a large housing on a street that was designed as a residential road. I happen to live on part of that road and I know the traffic on that road is probably like much of the rest of the town, not driving very appropriately in those areas. I mean, if you can get up to fifty or sixty miles an hour in one block before the stop sign, that's very interesting. But that concerns me, concerns me from the aspect of our impression on the community in terms of our one and only office in town that is for the community. And to put it all down there, just leaves me with some concerns.
Can you tell me of any other district where people make payments at their sewer pond?
Well, the, the districts that we toured in the valley, most of them are like that, but they are sanitary districts. They're not multi-purpose districts.
Okay, and they're not, but they're not in a residential neighborhood either.
Well, some of those are pretty far away from town.
Right.
But are they, are they county?
No, they're a service district like we are.
Are they within a city?
They are within a city, but they're still a service district like us. So the city doesn't actually take care of the, of their sewer.
But they have other community offices in town.
Right, but they still collect payments at their wastewater.
They really do.
Yeah.
But they're not in a residential neighborhood.
The one in Mendota is out of the middle of nowhere. And you really have to be driving quite a while to get there. So it's really, and I understand Ms. Buckman's concern about people driving, driving down there and that we're not in the center of town. However, we also don't have the luxury of having enough funding to build an office downtown right now. But we still have the bonus of having enough office space to function effectively. Right now, we have three people sharing an office and.
Did we, did we bring a floor plan for this building? Is this a functional space for the district?
And it was originally requested as far back as May.
The intent of this meeting from the last meeting I intended was to discuss this facility specifically. And once this facility is hashed out, then it makes sense to move forward with the design for this space because until you know how much space is available, then you're not gonna know what to do with it.
That, that wasn't my intent.
That was my.
I, I could build you a castle or I could do nothing, what, what can we plan here? If that costs money to design that, and if you wanna plan here with or without the CSD, with or without the fire department?
No, but the whole purpose of this meeting was, we called it functional space because we wanted to be able to discuss all of the functional space of the district.
If you check the video at the.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue about it, I know what my intent was.
Okay, well, I didn't spend the money to do the floor design.
That's fine.
And the motion was made by Director Shangster and seconded by Director Calvins and Palafax, you abstained. And that was to come up with a scope of work for this building to come into the November meeting.
Right.
And that was to be discussed at the November meeting, however, that was not agendized.
That's not, that's not what we discussed for the functional space stuff.
I, I don't, I'm not gonna argue with you about it.
Okay, I'm saying, check the record.
Well, there were two different subjects, there were two different subjects.
Exactly, that was the point. And all this came up during the request to come up with the scope of work for this building to make this more user-friendly and then it drifted off into that path.
Right.
So that's why we're here doing this.
What my intent would be, would be to look at everything, all the space that the district have, has, and determine what the best use of it would be and then determine what a build out should be. That's, I'm, that's not something I need to be worried about, I'm, I'm just explaining to you what, what my intent is.
And.
And you.
That's fine.
Okay, so.
That's your intent.
Well, I've always, I'm under the impression that this building, having the CSD in this building, restricts how it's used and the finances, the funding for what this building can be. I mean, if this is a fire station, we have, we have non-emergency things in this place. We're restricted from grants and funding that are available, is that the case?
The additional burden of doing any construction within this building that hasn't been addressed is this is an essential needs facility, an essential needs facility has to be built to a, to a compliance of one and a half times standard construction. And it also.
Is that new or re, or?
It's anything that happens within the structure, if you wanna add to it.
Okay, so then what happens when these offices are vacated? And are we in compliance, you know?
We've never been in compliance. Once, once.
That's right.
Once that last bathroom wall was built and this wall was closed off, that's as far as the compliance went. But we're not gonna go back to that.
Okay, well, since we know we're not in compliance, what are we gonna do about it?
I think the question was.
That's, that was the intent, and unfortunately, you weren't at that meeting, Joe, so maybe you could review, review the, the notes.
Okay.
I'm just saying, there was an intent. And the intent was just to figure out what to do with this space in its current condition until that space is built. And then once that space is built, we'll know how much of the server equipment, how much of the archives, how much of the, the staff is gonna be relocated to that facility.
I would assume that most of it.
I would assume so too.
And I would assume that, I would assume that then there's spaces here to be made to what they need to be, what they need to be.
But then you, then we'd have, then we'd have a common sense approach on how to, how to, you know.
But that also, that also allows us to pursue funding that we wouldn't nor, we wouldn't normally be able to get for this facility because we have non-emergency services in this facility.
That could be absolutely correct.
I'm sure.
It's never been documented that the CSD is a non-emergency entity, we occupy this space.
But there's non-emergency business going on.
I'm correct, I mean, you have a CSD government business going on in this space. And what we're saying to develop it out is anything with needs as a firehouse would require that one and a half times the building's.
Right, that's gonna be required anyway. Any, any changes made to this building, the fact is that there is a.
We should have got a permit for the changes that have been made.
And there's some serious massive compliance.
When this building was built twenty, two thousand two. When this building was built twenty years ago, it was built, the grant said it had to be a fire station.
That was my understanding.
They moved the CSD immediately, day one.
So there, there we have that.
The grant was written by the Samuel Fire District, and if I'm not mistaken, and then probably within the span of one year, they, there was petition for this community to form the CSD and that's when the election happened. And so everything went like that.
And it was just kinda overlooked?
It was, maybe because everything.
For lack of a better word?
Yeah, I, I guess so, because.
So back to the original question, there's a question that was posed, this is where strictly a fire station, would that open us up to additional grant funding to develop this properly?
We're still, we're still able to have that grant funding because the CSD's never been identified as an entity in this essential space. It has to reach a central space because it's a fire station, not that the CSD couldn't be in here. Templeton has a mixed occupancy, somewhat the same because their offices interchange. They just have their barrier when they built it, they built the CSD down the side. To answer your question, John, I understand what you're asking for, but as far as the plan, but the actual floor plan of what this building would look like with or without that, two complete different things. We're really.
Great, but you even, you even came up with ideas in, in a discussion with me.
The, the back wall and the south wall are sitting on the property line. The property line going out here goes to the power pole and that dirt pile the dumpsters are at. Looking at our restrictions, the, and with having the equipment in here, you're talking about space. We, we looked at plans, we drew up plans that incorporated this apparatus bay and adding on to this building. And that is not really financially feasible because this building doesn't make the one and a half times and the new construction, you almost would be better building along with the store.
And then present those drawings he had hanging on the wall. Saying this is what it would look like if we did this, this is what it would look like if we tried to build adjacent to, and then this is what this building would look like.
So we looked at that and like this overall cost of it. And if you start looking at it, and it, it's out of our range, it's out of our reach. So then, we looked at, well, the essential needs, basically because of the apparatus bay and that stuff, and it has to be a separation. If a separate structure was built just for that, now you have the shell of this building to turn into your city government building, you could add the things you needed to it. But again, the cost of that exceeds this by far because you would be completely building an app bay there and then completely remodeling this with a whole new interior.
I totally understand that.
And so, when the, it all came down.
Didn't you tell me that that was a good idea, that was your, that was your idea?
I think that is a good idea if you are to keep your essential needs and everything down here. You have, to build the app bay out there and turn this whole shell into all office space, meeting rooms, whatever you need. But when, as we're talking, the only thing about that is the cost versus this. That right there is adding thirteen, thirty-nine, one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine square feet with a building you have to build anyway. And the, the true attraction to this is you're going to build that. So adding this to it for that cost, you, you, all your permits are gonna be done anyway, all your building plans, designs, everything. Really, it's just gonna be the material of thirteen hundred square feet added into that. And now you achieve this larger CSD workspace. Doing it here can be done, it would have to be done a little different, and then you have your perfect builder development all the way down the front. You know, personally, I'm in favor of a lot of that, there are a lot of, of things that are on the cons side of it. You get the pros and your cons. So we're still here on, on the street where we have the concern about traffic and people crossing over to get to above public facility, which is always scary in this situation. And we've got measures to, to put a four-way stop at Eleventh and Fourteenth, which I can just slow some of that down. So there are some ideas with it, and then if you do put the CSD in here, how much room do they need? How, what's the fire department's build out and how far are we gonna look at going with that? Because currently, right now, volunteer department responding, but our growth is, is expanding, our needs are expanding, and our space is expanding. Community room, talking about sheriff substation, talking about, you know, more room for a CSD office and then the fire department.
So, so. So I'll just throw something under, something you said. You have six point four people coming here.
Okay.
Currently, they park here or they park somewhere. How many people a day do you think park out here and walk across the street to the post office?
I do.
How many?
Well, at five o'clock in the afternoon, it's almost everybody in this town.
Well, I don't think we should be too concerned about people walking across the street to make, to make a payment.
I'm just saying that if it's here, it's here, that's all.
My whole concern from the start was having the, the payments, the people making their payments, the, the, just the traffic in general.
Well, with that said.
Going through, going through a residential neighborhood. I don't, if I lived down there, I wouldn't want, I have to look at from the perspective of the people that live on that street.
Okay, so then, if there doesn't have to be the separation that I assumed needed to happen here, what if there was an office person at the front of this building who was a combination? Fire reception, that's pretty, yes.
So, so.
And then you move other services that are not like totally frontline and probably need some discretion, finances, those other type of things, down there with utilities? So we can have that happen and still find funding for this?
That was, that was the other point I wanted to make is the one, the one firefighter that we have that responds works here.
I know.
So now, now, not only are we having all the traffic down there to see her, but now when there's an emergency, she's gotta come racing down that street to come down.
Yeah, I thought about that.
So if we could figure out a way to at least have a payment made center here.
So one of the things we talked about with that, because you mentioned we're concerned about the traffic. One, the drop window is installed to take those payments and the more people are putting them in there because it's more secure. Two, tomorrow parent's done an extremely good job communicating with our bill payers and we've come up with the ACH payment plan and she prompts, educates, and teaches our public that this is a way to pay and that will also eliminate and reduce our late payments, things of that nature because some people have, that's one of their reasons. So it would reduce that. The third thing was, yes, to have like the day the bills go out, a two-day window, educate the people. When you get your bill, you got two days, you can pay it right here if you choose to do so. So we wouldn't necessarily have to occupy that front office every single day, you could set narrow the window.
But you're still getting six point four people.
Well, if you do the ACH and the drop window and, and.
And go target links day, Thursday.
Targeted dates where they can make drop payments at those times, you're reducing all that from going down that way.
Well, one, one thing that I wanna just be clear on is that although Ms. Rojas is a very vital part to the fire department and the utilities, eventually, somebody else will fill that seat.
I agree.
So you cannot make decisions because.
No, I, I completely, I completely agree with that. That was just one, that was just one current.
It's a facet of it, for sure.
It's the, it's the having twenty-four parking spaces and then having a nine hundred and seventy-five square foot conference room where we're gonna have meetings. And then you're gonna have a hot, hot ticket item like the, like the two eighteen ordinance that we did. And now you've got people spilling out into the parking, out into the residential street to park their cars. And I'm just, I can't, I can't with clear conscience do that to those people. There's plenty of parking downtown that people can find a parking space to come here for a meeting. And we shouldn't be taking them down there.
So if we, say we build a building next door for an apparatus bay, let's say, and then we convert this into a CSD and then now everything's still here. The problem is now you have zero parking because now you've, now you've taken all of our parking into an apparatus.
That's not, that's not what I'm asking for at all. I'm asking for, all I'm, all I'm asking for is if there's a way for people to make their payments here and you could expand the size of this building, this room for larger meetings. You have a larger training area for the fire department and the CSD would use it once or twice a month.
So my, as, as the director of utilities and basically, you know, managing with tomorrow, the utility building, if you have one person here by yourself, no, a person, a female or male, whoever, if you have one person here taking payments by themselves. Currently, there is no full-time person who is dedicated to be here every single day, so now you have one person here by themselves. You would have to accommodate that in the front by creating a barrier to protect that person from the public.
I totally agree.
In which case, now you're using up the valuable space that we're trying to, to vacate to allow the fire department to expand into those spaces to be a more effective fire department. So now you're eating up the front office space with more division.
Plus it's a, it's a barrier that do you really want? As friendly as this office is during the day, from day to day?
Yeah, you're also looking at.
Wait, is the fire department still gonna be here?
The fire department will be here, but right now you have two people that are on contract that have to take care of numerous things and they're not always here. So you can't.
Put our heads together and come up with something.
So I.
Maybe we need a sliding drawer for the, for the front office.
Unfortunately, there's no room to expand this room. The, the intent, and Rob and I have discussed this numerous times, is when the CSD does relocate to either building here or over an L Street or wherever it may be, the vision is for this to become sleeping quarters so we could actually increase our staffing and perform like a fire department is supposed to perform, so we can recruit people. If we can't recruit people from within, we can recruit people from elsewhere to come and do the shift covers that we need to.
You're talking probably upstairs?
No, we're talking down here.
Well, the whole footprint.
It seems to me that everything has flipped since the last time.
The whole footprint, there's no, there's nothing said.
Upstairs is such a complicated animal, you have no idea what it takes to sweep people up there.
I, that's why I don't understand why I was being built out.
It was built out as storage, to the best of my knowledge.
Well, so anyway, we are, we're making every attempt that we can to mitigate people having to come and make payments. Through ACH, the, you know, people still have to come here, put money in the drop box, but they do that at all times of the day. The, you know, people coming in here and paying their bills, the highest traffic days are on the ten and on the fourteen. So, you know, if we, if we have a space where somebody can be here on the tenth and the fourteen and their own, their exposure is very minimal, then, you know, that's a possibility. As a supervisor, I would hate to have a sole person at an outpost somewhere with no support when everybody that would be there, that person's backup is halfway across town.
I agree with that.
Right now, all, right now, Luliana's support is tomorrow and a call back. So if they're not next to her, then when she goes on lunch, then we're closed. If she has to go on a call, then we're closed.
Right.
And, you know, that's not a good image to the public either. When we've had numerous people come in and we're closed for lunch because one or two of them are sick and the other one's at lunch or at a call or whatever.
I kinda don't understand the need for people to have to come in to make a payment.
Well, we should make every effort to make it easier for them to pay their bills. And ACH is one of those things that.
Right.
An enormous amount of people want and continuously ask for, that we are very close to having.
But you won't get every, but there's still people that will have to make payments, they just.
There's still people that have made cash payments, enormous people.
There's nine million people in this country, they don't even have bank accounts, okay?
Probably very.
Many of them live in San Miguel.
Probably a lot of them, there's a lot of people that do live here and.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, for sure, but I mean, yeah, you're right, but.
And maybe we should probably take a step back and look at, you know, all of our properties that this district owns and what do we really need? So then we can start piecing stuff together, sort of going, looking at one building, then thinking, well, what about this other building?
Right, that's what. And, and who's to say?
That was the intent of this meeting.
Who's to say this isn't a utilities department in twenty years and there is a city hall? And there is a fire station, you know, like real, who's to say? In twenty years from now, that's a long time.
Could, could you?
I'll be an old man.
I'll be a little. And you guys' question and the reason for this meeting was to expand our workspace and to accommodate the needs. This one, because of the growth that had to happen and the additional square foot was only that thirteen hundred square foot, was the cheapest because we have to do it anyway. There were some other plans about location and we talked about those, but they all come at the price. USDA has low-interest loans and Fire Scope has grants, they could probably help us out. But without knowing exactly what we're gonna ask for, we're throwing in the dark, you know, you're throwing darts in the dark, you don't know what you're gonna make.
That's why we gotta hold this meeting.
Right, so it also expands, there's, there's a timeframe kind of to what this is and that's why this is important to, to take a look at and why some of that can be developed and move forward with the twenty-year plan and start looking at immediate needs. Because we have needs here, the fire department has needs.
Sure.
And there's other needs like a, we've talked about a sheriff heat station. And there's other needs, like a, a, we've talked about a sheriff beat station being in town, and it's highly desired, and I would say it's highly needed.
And the more people that we get off of this area, or this, you know, facility, the better chance of that happening are.
Well, that's a component that's missing in this discussion, I understand that this is absolutely positive, the least costly solution of having office space to accommodate the operational needs of the CSD. What I'm not seeing is, what are the operational needs for this building from a, a fire department standpoint? A sheriff beat station, there's been no discussion about what this will look like if we move all of these offices to the new wastewater.
Okay, so if that, if this happens.
Let me clarify something, okay? If you go back to the December twenty-sixth meeting, two thousand nineteen, agenda item, uh it was like it was six, six, something like that, XI six, and I gave you a staff report, the staff report had bullet points, it had four bullet points on it. And the bullet points gave you choices as what to do with the current state of the second floor's building solely.
Just for the second floor.
Just for the second floor, just to, I'm not gonna say mitigate, but just to proceed to how to make that more presentable to the public, how to make it more useful for us currently.
Right.
You had four choices.
That's the only, that's.
So that's how, that's, I don't want to say that we're getting off track, but that's how that was dealt with.
We talked about, we talked about staffing levels and all kinds of things.
My question is, is what will happen to the space vacated down here by these offices being moved to another location?
This area would be redesigned to meet the needs of what the department will be.
And that's what I'm asking, what are the operational needs, what are, what are the point?
We're gonna have to have coverage here, whether we have local people that can do it or if we have to have someone that can come in periodically that is available here, and it's a twenty-four hour thing.
Well, that, that's what I made, that's the picture I'm looking for, will this turn into a living quarters, for example?
There, there would be a portion of it, yes.
Will there be a sheriff beat station within those walls? Okay, so you have to build it out then.
What's that?
You have to build it up, this room's not permitted.
We have to know what's gonna be left behind, I mean, currently upstairs, there's a whole huge section of cat home.
If you're gonna make this a living space, you've got, Scott, if you're gonna make this a living space, you've gotta tear it down and rebuild it. Because it wasn't built with a permit.
True.
So either way, you have to build it out, and the building has been continuing upstairs without a permit, so let's just come out and say it.
I've said that many times. You're not, you're not calling it a black sheet.
I know, I know, I know you're the one that finally brought it to a stop, I think.
No, I think, I think it was, it was, that was the board's direction to just stop moving forward, because it was going in a direction that we couldn't, we, we just didn't have a direction.
The point is, is no matter what we do, it has to be redone, it has to be built out, there has to be a design plan.
Something's gotta happen, you know, in compliance, what are we doing to get into compliance?
Well, here's the issue, you can put anything into compliance, but what are we complying to? We don't know who's gonna be left over here, you don't know if you're gonna build that building.
Let's talk about that then.